Okay, how you doing?
Good.
Recording in progress.
Hello, your chairs. Michael Ray.
All right, good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Lunenburg Select Board. Today is Wednesday, January 15th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel, on Facebook Live, on the Public Access Facebook page, and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel after the meeting. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the chairman. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion, to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. We're going to begin tonight with public comment. Are there any public comments from the board?
No.
No.
Are there any public comments from the public, Mr. Rogers?
Mr. Chairman, member of the board, just for my own edification, will you give us a thumbnail sketch as to the process that was used and what has transpired? And will we have an opportunity to hear from each and every one of you relative to your selection and the people that impressed you the most? Kind of like, you know, encapsulated version, so called.
Yes, we're going to have an open discussion.
Okay, great.
The entire thing's going to be an open discussion.
Thank you.
Yeah. Are there any other public comments from the public? Mr. Passios, I saw you had your hand up.
Yeah, I don't know why it went down, but Dave Passios, formerly of 56 Whiting Street, Lunenburg, presently a resident of Jefferson, New Hampshire, seven decades in the town of Lunenburg. I'm before you this evening just to reiterate what I said back at the beginning of this process to both the search committee and this committee, that this needs to get done correctly. The process should not be rushed. Don't give away the bank, and make sure that the decision you make in this process is the best possible choice to take the town forward into the future, and a better future than we've had for the last few years. Personally, this is my own opinion, no one else's, but I believe that this search should go back to the committee as of tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Passios. Are there any other public comments from the public on Zoom? All right, seeing none, we're going to move into discussion and possible motion to name a preferred candidate for the position of Town Manager with whom to enter contract negotiations with the town of Lunenburg. So last night, we interviewed three highly qualified candidates for our permanent Town Manager. First, I want to thank each of them for their interest in Lunenburg and for taking the time to get to know our community and coming in and interviewing with both the screening committee and the Select Board. When Heather announced her resignation, I immediately reached out to the Town Moderator and the Chairs of the Committees who needed to select a representative to serve on the screening committee. We put that committee together in a little over a week, and they hit the ground running to start the search for Heather's replacement. I want to thank all of the volunteers who served on that committee for their time and hard work going through the applicants, interviewing them, and putting forward the finalists that we ultimately interviewed last night. They did a great job in presenting qualified candidates. I also want to thank John Petron and the team at Community Paradigm. Their guidance and experience went a long way in making this process as smooth as possible. The way the agenda was set up last night did not include a discussion, so we've had some time to think about this ahead of our discussion tonight. I'm going to open it up for discussion, but I'd like to ask members to focus their discussion on the positives, and let's first see if there's a clear frontrunner. Mr. Petron, is there anything else you'd like to add?
Nothing.
All right, so in no particular order, I'll just open it up for discussion.
Mr. Chair, if I may comment first. I would hope that everybody would speak to all the candidates before anybody...I mean, I'm not looking for a frontrunner, I'm not looking for anything to Mr. Rogers' point. I think we owe it to people, since we just did the interviews last night, that we all give our perspective on each of the candidates in however light we want, but that we go along before anybody takes a straw poll or makes any motion or makes anything, just so people can understand where each of us stand on any of these.
Yeah, agreed, I think that's fair. Anyone want to go first?
Sure, I'll go first, why not? I was a member of the...I should just take this off right now. I was a member of the screening committee, so this was my second interview with all these candidates. I too want to thank them all for their interest in Lunenburg, for their research, for their candid responses to both interviews. And I think you're right, Mr. Chair, that, as I said when the committee, the screening committee, brought these three members forward, the three candidates, that I don't think we can go wrong with any of these three. That being said, in no particular order, I'm just going to go through the three candidates as they appear in my notepad here. So, Mr. Woodsmall, I thought he, with his background as DPW Director in Holland and his tenure there, brings a strong sense of leadership from his team. He focused on collaboration and communication with his employees and the people, and other employees, as obviously as DPW Director. He works in conjunction with other departments, often, school he mentioned a lot, Conservation Commission, Planning Board, et cetera. So, making sure that there is a full discussion before any decisions are made, making sure that people can express their opinions, and his respect of those opinions was very important. His financial planning background is limited to the DPW, so he's never been a manager of a whole town. That was obviously known going into it. That is, you know, I guess, one drawback to his candidacy, but because he heads a $12 million department and has 33 FTEs working for him, I think that the next logical step would be Town Manager, so I am not really too nervous about him if we would choose him to step into that position. His own admission is that he enjoys, although his background educationally is an engineer, he really considers himself, and these are his words, "a municipal nerd," and joined the municipal ranks and worked his way up those ranks to where he is now. He's been in, hold on, I believe, 13 years now. Had a lot of familiarity, has a lot of interest of his own in expanding that, so while his position there seems to be secure, he really wants to take the next step and expand his career to Town Manager, and I think that everything leading to this would lead that to a normal conclusion, so it is not something that I think is out of reach for him. He's very interested in life-work balance, that has been something that, you know, has been at issue in Lunenburg for several years, more than several years, probably at least the last 10, that we've had people work extraordinarily long hours, and then we get used to that, and I don't think that is conducive to somebody continuing the job, I think that really leads to burnout, and he wanted to focus on that. He's a good delegator, but he's also detail-oriented enough, being an engineer, in maintaining projects and project management and overseeing both the fiscal and organizational part of the town. So I thought he was a very, a very good candidate. Angie Ellison is next on my list, and she brings probably the longest amount, or the deepest experience in this job for Town Manager, which she has served in several locations, seemed to have a good command of how, what the Town Manager position is, what the Town, the MGL laws are on all different fronts, in zoning, you know, where she needed to in zoning and finances, very good financial background. Again, as all of them pretty much said, that collaboration is the key, is key to any positive She is reliant heavily on department head meetings and then making sure that she meets with other members of the staff deeper than the department heads on those occasions when need be or as need be, but most of the organization would be through department head, although she continuously said she had an open-door policy, which I think is very important. She has experience in all different types of towns, from North Adams to Fairhaven, and I'm missing one, I could look up, but I'm not going to, but so lots of different towns, I mean, Fairhaven being on the water and North Adams being all the way, you know, in the northwest part of the state, very different, but has had, you know, success in those areas with projects, very solid in HR and employee management, very confident in her own abilities. I think all of them were very confident in their abilities. She came with a whole list of accomplishments, I thought was an interesting list, that she provided to us, and again, overall, a very, very strong candidate, which I, with the deepest resume as Town Manager than any of them. And last was Jen Warren Diamond, and, excuse me. She was a very strong candidate in a very different way, so very, of all of them, probably the most, and I don't mean this to be a negative for her or a negative against everybody else, but probably the most openly energetic of all of the candidates, so really, you know, really kept the pace of her speaking. She spoke clearly, but quickly, and on point, which is very interesting, very data-driven person, looks to, again, as all of them do, you know, the whole organization will be held together with direction policies from this board to the Town Manager, the Town Manager disseminating that through the department heads as the policies call for, and that position, the Town Manager overseeing everything, that is, fits perfectly into her mindset. Another open-door policy person. She has had some Town Manager experience, but only most recently, but for a few years, so again, familiar with the job. She would be new to budget creation as a whole, she's done parts of budgeting. At her other job, she relied heavily in Wes Boylston on Finance Director and other parts of the finance team, this would be a first go-round where she would be doing the entire budget, she was upfront about that. She openly said that finances are not her strength, but obviously, organization is her strength, and management and attention to details are her strengths, very, once given a mission, very driven to accomplish that mission with the proper people and employing the right people and reporting back and establishing, you know, consensus not only among the elected and appointed bodies or not just the hired employees, but also the community at large. Has done some union negotiations, as had Angie, and again, overall, I think the foundation of a real, solid Town Manager material who would be very beneficial to the town as a whole. So again, that was my initial overview of all of the three candidates. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone else want to go next?
Sure. So my notes are just in the order of how we interviewed them last night. I agree with Mr. Alonso on everything that he just said, I think he did a great job of summarizing how the interviews went, at least for the ones that we saw, obviously we weren't on the screening committee. For Angie, I have her, I noted that she had significant experience with infrastructure and projects, which I think is important with what we have facing our town, as well as in various leadership roles in her different, in her resume. She talked a lot about, she has a strong DEI focus and some team-building initiatives, and a proven ability to reorganize and streamline operations, which I think can be important coming in. For Jennifer, I have exceptional preparation and research on Lunenburg, I thought, you know, she was the only one that created a custom PowerPoint, which we didn't require, but I did appreciate the amount of, how knowledgeable she was about our community and about the key players, I thought that was impressive. She has a strong focus on morale building and public engagement, she was a clear communicator. And then for John, I think, again, as I stated with Angie, extensive infrastructure experience which, and project and capital, capital, project management, which I think can be, would be able to be expounded upon and broadened to be a whole-town approach, reliable and methodical and technical and operational challenges, and a strong project management track record.
Thank you, Amanda.
Are you done? Yep. So first of all, I want to thank the screening committee for all the work, and it was aggressive timeline, and I know they all had many things to do, and they squeezed this in and got it done, I want to thank them and John Petron, Petron and Community Paradigm. I think they brought forward three, three good qualified candidates. I'll just, like Ms. Moore, take them in the order that we met them last night. First, let me say, there's some common underlying threads across all three. All of them are, you know, said they're collaborative, they are, you know, team-building, openness, communication, integrity, all of those basic core qualities, every single candidate commented on, so that's a given, that's good, they all have the same foundation that, I mean, I'd be looking for in a Town Manager. So Angie, she has experience as a Town Administrator. She did stress a lot about the staff development, training, succession planning. She has dealt with, you know, with budget, her presentation actually was on how she explained an override to Town at Town Meeting with Jennifer. She served as Assistant Town Administrator and recently as a Town Administrator, so she has also gone through a budget cycle. I actually had in my notes that Wes Boylston, where she was Town Administrator, did not have a Finance Director or an HR Director.
That's correct, yeah.
No.
Okay. Not that they weren't filled, those positions didn't exist, which was a little bit of a jaw-dropping moment for me. So she had more of the HR responsibility in the Town Manager role because they did not have an HR Director. She clearly did a lot of research on Lunenburg, and she was very upfront and very honest about the challenges that we have and realistic about, these can't be fixed overnight. So when asked, you know, what can you expect to sit here and say you've done in a year, you know, it's not, everything's all hunky-dory. And I think she was, you know, very, very polished presenter. John, so he has many, many years in the municipal sector, he has come up through the ranks, so he's, you know, he's got his feet really planted in municipal, he sees it, I think, from, you know, a different viewpoint. He, although he hasn't been, you know, done a town-wide budget, he's managed his department and operating capital budget, as well as the enterprise fund. And let me just check, so this, you know, he's looking to continue his advancement in his career, and so this would be the next logical step for him. So again, I think all three were very good, and yeah, I think I'll just end there.
All right, I want to, again, as has been said several times, I want to thank the screening committee for the work that they did to provide us with three qualified candidates, and I also want to thank the work of John and Community Paradigm for all the legwork that they did, so that way we could be as prepared as possible coming into the interview process. I think that my colleagues have well captured generally, I think, my impressions of how the interviews went, so I will also go in order and just add additional content. Interviewing Ms. Ellison, I think, you know, there were, looking at, let me step back from that as well, another thing as well is I'm adamantly opposed to Googling people before you interview with them. So I went into the interviews not having Googled anyone, I also, as many people know, I'm not on social media, and so I don't see whatever is out there, and so I really went into this, I think the best way to hire is off of resumes and interviews, and then to do some reference checks and research after you've conducted those interviews. So going into it with that mindset, I also went into it the mindset that all three candidates were qualified, I trusted the screening committee's work, and accepted that all the candidates we were meeting with were qualified for the job. Meeting with Ms. Ellison, I think that she seemed to have a deep breadth of knowledge when it came to organizational management. I think that her background in education really stood out as being a very thoughtful, almost science-based approach to management. It seemed as if she had justification for some of what looks to be short tenures in different communities. That was plausible, and that made sense to not be as alarming as I think it looked at first. I think that she was methodical in how she presented herself, I think pace-wise, it was a very even pace, and, you know, part of what I was looking for was trying to imagine, you know, this board is going to change over time, there's a lot of boards with a lot of personalities, there's a lot of people, and how well Ms. Ellison would be able to work with that, and I think that certainly there was a demonstration in the interview at least of ability to manage people and processes, and that's what really, I think, stood out to me the most in the interview with Ms. Ellison, again, deeply thoughtful in her approach. The interview with Ms. Warren Diamond, I, I think that Ms. Warren Diamond presented very well, I will say that lawyers ought to present very well, they go through three years of training in which they are, it's focused on presentation, and so I think that how she came across was, certainly she presented very well. I draw a distinction myself in looking at the, I've heard some comments about being very well-prepared, she was by far the most prepared in terms of research into the town of Lunenburg compared to the other candidates. For me, that was not necessarily a big plus, I think it was noted, but I recognize that, you know, if you have a full-time job as one of the other candidates, you have a family, you probably don't have the time to be able to invest in watching, you know, four or five months of Select Board meetings as perhaps Ms. Warren Diamond was. I think that I had a lot of questions about the accuracy of her resume and where the skills were acquired that she professed to possess. I think that when you look at resumes, you can usually identify, okay, this person worked in this environment, they probably acquired the skills from that situation. I, I think that, again, Ms. Warren Diamond presented very well, I think there was a bit of a disconnect for me between the skills that were professed versus the skills that were demonstrated. I will say Ms. Warren Diamond was very upfront about some of the challenges that she had working in her last position. I don't believe that recognition of error is the same thing as acquisition of skills to be able to proceed differently. I think that being aware of being problematic or having problems does not mean, again, that somehow you've acquired the skills to do it differently, you're just aware that what you did before maybe didn't work. So Ms., Mr. Woodsmall, I think, you know, again, these interviews were going late for most of us, you know, by the time we got to Mr. Woodsmall, it'd already been a 12-hour day for us, or 11, 12-hour day. Mr. Woodsmall presented very well, I think his resume and his presentation demonstrated several things. Number one, being professional development, mentorship being of value, work-life balance being an important value, I think that, you know, future Town Manager, whoever we hire, you know, people work and they have a life, and it's important for community to be aware of how much work can get done in a reasonable work schedule, so that way resources can adequately be provided. I think Mr. Woodsmall demonstrated in the interview that he prioritizes building teams, he prioritizes, based on his work experience, managing projects, managing people, a lot of those soft skills that go a long way with departments. I think that in the experience of being a department head, you know, what his resume and what the interview demonstrated was a continual process of learning, continual acquisition of new skills to be better at the role he was in, and so I think his resume demonstrated, you know, several years and, you know, four or five years in one position, acquisition of new skills to graduate into the next, it all kind of followed, and it all flowed very well, and it also presented a lot of stability in terms of, it's hard to be in a role for 13 years unless you're doing something right, and working with multiple Town Managers. So I think Mr. Woodsmall, generally, although he does have background as a DPW Director, it came across as the next logical progression in his career could be a role as a Town Manager, and I think he certainly demonstrated that he would be capable. Certainly, in his first year developing a town-wide budget, there would be some challenges, but I think that Lunenburg, having observed how our previous Town Manager compiled budgets, it was very heavily contributed to by department heads, and so I think that there's going to be a small learning curve, but I think that Mr. Woodsmall demonstrated a high capacity to acquire new knowledge and skills.
All right, thank you, Michael Ray. I largely agree with most of the feedback that's been shared already, but I will go through and read all of my notes as well. So for Angie Lopes Ellison, my impression of her and her character was that she was very grounded in her values and her integrity, I think that really came across in the interview. I appreciated her honesty and thought she had a very collaborative and team-driven leadership style that was very clear. Like has been noted before, she definitely has the most experience in a Town Manager role, and her explanation of her employment history was good for me. She's also said many times that she's looking for a home, so I know that in terms of longevity in a role, that's something that she's looking for as well. I like that she has a goal-oriented approach to budgeting, I thought that was really interesting. She definitely has strong finance and budgeting skills, a lot of experience with that. She has experience with large projects, including a sewer treatment facility and a new fire department building that she worked on. I thought she had a very good approach to HR, focusing and really prioritizing professional development and succession planning, and she seemed to be really good at doing public engagement and outreach. She told us about how she got, I think it was 490 people, to show up to a Town Meeting when they were normally just hitting their quorum of 10 residents, which I found to be very impressive. So on to Jennifer Warren Diamond. I agree, she clearly did a tremendous amount of research. She had a very good She had a very good idea of what the challenges we're facing are and what she would be dealing with when starting with us. She understood the need to balance both committee and staff resources to manage projects. I'm kind of jumping around here with my notes. She had a good focus on professional development of staff. For example, she talked about getting staff the training they need or want to advance their careers. And in terms of her character and how she presented herself, I thought she was very confident. She was a strong communicator. She had a tremendous amount of energy, and she had a really good sense of humor as well. And I think, honestly, she was probably the strongest interviewer. Like Renee noted, she had to work without any dedicated HR or finance staff. I think that's pretty impressive. She had a good approach to maintaining morale. She talked about regularly organizing staff events, and she seemed to really understand the importance of being present in the community. So going to community events, talking to residents, just being present, that's something that's really important to me, and she seemed to really prioritize that, and I appreciated that. All right, on to John Woodsmall. He has worked as a department head for over a decade, so preparing department budgets for over a decade, and he's worked in municipal government for over 20 years. He hasn't been a town manager, right, but he does, I think, have a really unique perspective into how a town manager can best support departments and their staff. And I do think that's a huge strength, that perspective. He also has learned what makes a good town manager, what makes a bad town manager, over time through his own personal experience, working under town managers, and I think that perspective is very valuable. I think he'd be able to develop strong relationships and maintain those relationships, which is really important to me, over time with department heads, of course, staff members, board members, and residents. He seemed to be a very honest person in terms of his personality. He's clearly a hard worker, he's clearly results-driven. He definitely has the most project management experience, that was clear as well. And he has a lot of experience leading people. Over a decade as a department head, again, like I said, managing a 34-person department, he knows how to invest in his people and their careers, and prioritizing that is important to him as a leader. He also said something that I really appreciated too, that I took note of, about how he'd go about the budget process by making sure everyone gets their fair increases, which I just see as another example of how his perspective as a department head is very valuable and would be valuable as a town manager. So I think all of these candidates are qualified. I personally would be comfortable hiring any of them. So do members have a preferred candidate at this point?
Yeah.
We all have a preferred candidate.
Are you looking for us to say who our preferred candidates?
Yeah, we're at that point now.
John, Mr. Woodsmall.
Okay.
I think I came in tonight with an opinion that, I've been going back and forth between my top two, which are John and Jennifer. I think, you know, having, I did do a lot of research. I did do research into the candidates beforehand. I would be comfortable with any, again, as Mr. Chair said, with any of the candidates. But those are my top two at the moment.
Okay.
You couldn't hear me?
No.
I'm sorry. I can try again. I can start again. Sorry, Dave. I came into tonight with two that I've been going back and forth between John and Jennifer. I'm not sure I really have a clear forerunner in my mind at this moment. I guess that's...
Okay. So they're equally tied. You called them both your preferred candidate, is that what you want to say?
And it's right in this moment, right now.
Okay. That's fair.
I would say that for me, while I did say that everybody would be qualified, I think John is not my top choice because I think in the position that we're in right now, we need somebody who's been town manager, not somebody learning town manager. And that is going to be, however, however qualified he has with everything getting up to here, still, I think there's a learning curve that goes with that, that I think we need somebody to hit the ground running. So for that, my first choice would be Angie Ellison and then Jennifer after that. And they're fairly close, but my concern, and I said that when I said about the energy, you know, there's a certain demeanor that you get a sense of, of when somebody has energy and when somebody has too much energy. And that could be taken in a wrong way. And that would be my only, my only, you know, trepidation about Jen. And I think that Angie has shown in a much broader set of skills in different environments. And as the vice chair said, you know, I think her background in education really helps in dealing with, even though she's not going to be part of the school department, still brings a good sense of what that department might need in working in collaboration with them. So I would say, you know, Angie first and then Jen for me.
So we have to rank them, right? We have to, we can only move one forward. So I was looking, you know, into subtleties that would tilt the scale one way or the other for each candidate. Angie and Jen are in my top two, and I'll come back to them. The reason that Mr. Woodsmall is not is similar to what Mr. Alonso said. We have a lot of new people in town in key positions who are going through, you know, their first budget cycle now. I just don't think it's the right match in the right time. It's not a knock at all against Mr. Woodsmall's skill or capability, it's just a risk that I'm not comfortable with, just given all of the current situation. So I was, you know, deciding for my top choice between Angie and Jennifer, and ultimately where I landed was to have Jennifer as my first choice and Angie as second.
Mr. Chair, if I can, I think I need to make my, instead of both, I feel like I need to. I had put together a scoring template based on what I think are my most important criteria, morale and retention, project completion, budget transparency, communication and collaboration, vision for Lunenburg, public engagement and crisis management. This is just my own scale that I was using because I was having a hard time, because I, like I said, those top two, in my opinion, I was having a hard time differentiating between the two. When I put everything in, I do have Jennifer as my one, number one, and John as my number two. I thought with Angie, again, I thought she was a strong candidate. I did have some concerns about her prior employment and leaving. I also had some concerns about her budgeting process. She mentioned that she only presented the town manager's budget, and the department heads only presented to her and didn't bring the budget, and the residents essentially only saw one budget. For me, that was concerning. I think the department heads should be able to present to the FinCom and to the people to see what their requests are. That was my biggest concern there. With John, I thought, again, he was a strong candidate. He was, as I said, my top two, in my top two. But again, I think because we do have so much, so many new employees here, especially on our finance team, we need someone that has been in this role previously. And with Jennifer, I do have the same concerns about her potential tendency to dominate conversations that could clash with our culture, but I think she realized that, you know, she did address it. She addressed it with watching our meetings and how our meetings differed between Wes Boilston's. So those are my thoughts.
Okay. So let's just, and then I'll say for the rest, I've gone back and forth between Jen and John. I think they are definitely the top candidates in my mind, and like I said, I've gone back and forth, and right now, at least, seems that we should at least consider where the majority is here. So I want to just take a second to go through all of this again. So Renee, Jen is your top choice and Angie is your second.
Correct.
Tom flipped around, Angie is your top choice and Jen is your second.
Yep.
And Amanda, you said that Jen is your top choice and John is your second?
Correct.
And then Michael Ray, just John?
My second choice would be Angie.
Angie. Okay. So just seeing where we are here for a second. Hold on one second. All right. So it seems like Jen has at least the top choice of Amanda and Renee, and me as well, because for me, honestly, Jen and John are tied. It's very difficult for me to pick between the two of them and say that one is going to be my top choice and one is my second choice, but it seems like she has that. Angeline has one top choice and two second choices, and then John has one top choice and two second choices. So we can go based off of a candidate who has the most top choices to narrow it down and see if people are willing to support the candidate that has? So I'm assuming, Tom, that you would be willing to support Jen as well, since she's your second choice?
If that's, yeah, I mean, if that's the way it was go, sure.
And then, Michael Ray, how about you? You seem to have pretty strong feelings about this.
Yeah, I did. You know, one of the things that I did last night after the interviews is I did go back and look at Wes Boilston's meetings with the select board and town manager, and I went back to the summer, well, really the spring. And skimming through several meetings, you know, I'll highlight a couple of things that I saw. One of the things that came up was there was, I noted in public comments, what I thought was a lot of residents coming to the select board over matters that could have been addressed by a town manager. You know, one of those incidents that, there was an incident that occurred over the summer in which the town manager issued for an event that was not, that the select board was neither invited to nor had any action related to. The town manager, I want to get her, Jen, basically issued a citation for outside third-party group on behalf of the select board with ever consulting the select board. I think that that's problematic. You know, an action like that, to me, if a board issues a citation, it has some weight to it, and town managers should not be issuing citations on behalf of select boards without their awareness or knowledge. There was an incident in which a young man, appeared to be in his twenties, came forward and commented on a problem at the cemeteries in which they had removed plantings from headstones and how this was causing problems. Another resident came and spoke to, issue at the senior center in which there was bingo every Friday, and then a directive came down that bingo was no longer allowed to happen. It was illegal because it was gambling. And then there was a move to then move the bingo from Friday afternoons to Tuesdays, which, of course, a lot of people were up at arms about. And, you know, when the town manager was asked about it, her response was to the effect of, well, the council of aging has control over the programming, their programming takes priority. It just seemed a little out of touch with what was being stated. And the general takeaway, there were a couple of statements that were made related to some line striping, some other stuff that were, that came across with a sense of authority that based on my years on this board, I now know were false. So, you know, my takeaway was that a lot of, there seemed to always be an answer to every question, but those answers weren't always correct, and those answers weren't always said with authority. I noted that the select board was commenting on some documentation related to a cannabis host, community host agreement. It seemed as if they had requested amendments at several meetings that weren't made, and then the response they got back just seemed to be inadequate. So I, I didn't, you know, I didn't, I'm not, I recognize that Jen came across with us as very strong. I think reading through her resume, how it reads to me is that she worked in administrative roles as basically a secretary until 2022. I don't, I think that people can progress in their careers from, you know, being an administrative assistant and executive assistant into higher levels of responsibility. But I think that the job as described at the Housing Authority, I also looked up how the Housing Authority is structured in Worcester, and I don't think the position that's listed on the resume actually exists. I think that what I did find was an administrative role that is very similar to what was described in the resume. So my takeaway was I think the resume was a bit inflated, to answer your question, Mr. Chair. I'm not, I can't support Jen being our next town manager.
All right.
But I can support the other candidate.
Firmly a no. So that would be a four-to-one vote, then, it sounds like, for Jen?
If that's how the board votes.
Well, yeah, we'll go through the other two candidates as well, because Angeline and John seem to be both tied for a second in the rankings. So did you list a second? I don't recall. Did you list a second?
I did. I said Angeline for a second.
You did. Okay.
But I mean, I, you know, we're a board. You know, I defer to the majority of the board. You know, it's always great to have five, five-to-zero votes, but, you know, four-to-one is okay. I cannot bridge that divide for me personally, but I also respect that I'm one member of five. You know, my time here is short. I think three members will be working with one of these candidates for much longer than me, you know, so I certainly defer to the board.
I understand that. Personally, I think out of all of the votes that we take, this is probably the vote that should have a five-to-zero vote. But, you know, that's just my opinion. But I would like to just press pause here for a minute and just ask Mr. Petron, what's your experience like interviewing candidates and getting to this point and seeing a board that seems to be maybe a little divided at this point?
The question comes down to making a decision.
Yeah.
And, you know, I don't want to lecture, you know, but you know, and you've worked through a lot of difficult issues already as a board, so you just need to make the decision. I've had boards in the past where, you know, it's a divided vote and that's it. We do ask for a vote to, once that vote is taken, to have a unanimous vote if possible. If not, just move forward. I mean, if the vote is four-one, it's four-one. And I'm hearing that, you know, maybe asking for a five-o might not, you know, be the case here, but that's, you know, that's a decision you all need to make at this point.
Right.
So the guidance is you've got to continue discussion, and if there is a motion, you know, to appoint and a second, take the vote and move forward. Sounds like you've done an excellent job in highlighting many of the, you know, the issues of the candidates. I'm not sure talking any further through them is going to necessarily sway, you know, anybody's minds or who's one and who's two. So my recommendation is move to the vote.
Fair. And I do also want to ask you, mainly for the public, you and I have discussed this, and it was brought up in a public comment, so I'd like you to address this. In your experience, what is it like if the community decides to not move forward with anyone that's brought to them, and they go out for a second round? What happens? What's that experience like?
It's different in every situation, and this was a difficult search to begin with, you know, for several reasons we had talked about at length, I think, at the screening committee, you know, location and other pieces. And, but you've got, you've all stated you've had three credible candidates here, you know, that was moved forward by the screening. If you don't, if you decide that you can't come to an agreement tonight and you want to go back out, now you've got that, that piece hanging over that the board couldn't come to an agreement, you know? And would you get new candidates? Sometimes, yes. Sometimes, no. You know, the market is very competitive right now. All of a sudden, it's become competitive out there, a lot of openings. You've had two communities in this area, you know, announce openings very recently, so they'll be on the market, you know, as well. And so I'm not sure it's going to regenerate a different, you know, group of candidates, you know, going forward.
All right. Thank you for addressing that, Mr. Petron.
Mr. Chair, I'm hoping, I'm going to make the next comment, I am hoping that you're asking that question as a purely rhetorical question, and that that is not on anybody's mind.
No, I was just going to address that, though. I don't support doing that at all.
Okay.
But it was in a public comment at the beginning of this meeting, so I wanted that to be answered mainly for the public.
I think the public comment was that it should go back to the committee. I don't know what that meant. To be very honest, I don't really know that I want to know what that meant. Like, do you want the committee to make a decision? They did. We put four, three candidates. So as far as discussing them, I mean, I would ask, I mean, I'm, I'm going to say I'm surprised.
surprised. That's not a good word. I mean, but maybe that's the best word when you're having a cold. I mean, we, we are in a, we're in a spot where we have new people in lots of different positions. And again, I was somebody who wanted to bring Mr. Woodsmall forward, as Mr. Petron would say, but after interviewing twice, I just don't think that Lunenburg is in a position where we could have somebody learn the position when we have a finance director learning the position, but we're going to have a superintendent learning the position or coming into a new position. And, you know, lots of new employees, I just, it makes it very precarious. If this, if we were replacing somebody who we knew was going to retire, we did a search, and everybody else was going forward, I, I think Mr. Woodsmall would be an excellent candidate. And that's why I wanted him to come forward. But I just would have a hard time to say that this is the, this is his moment, like this is the time, and this is the location.
And I will, I, I will modify my vote of one, my first choice to Angeline and not John. I mean, I don't know if that changes anything, but.
Yeah.
But I will join Tom in that.
Well, it doesn't seem to, because I think Jen just has the most number one rankings. So I guess at this point, the real question is, how comfortable are we with a four to one vote versus a five to zero vote?
It would be good to have the support of everybody, I think.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I mean, I, you know, if I may ask, Mr. Chair, you know, for the members who didn't list Angeline as their number one, you know, I, I vocalize how, how I would feel about maybe one of the other candidates, but could there be consensus around Angeline?
No.
No.
All right. So it would also definitely be a four to one vote.
Not that it would definitely, but my strongest concerns, my strongest concerns are with Angie based on my research that I have done and just my own personal feelings.
Okay.
I wouldn't feel comfortable changing my vote, not to say that I wouldn't support it if the entire board felt that way.
Sure. So it sounds like we're at a similar situation now with both Jen and Angie, four to one, but the opposition to each of those candidates would be comfortable if that's what the board so decides.
Well, I don't think Angie's in the same position as, she only has two first places anyway, right?
Right. Exactly. So that's why. All right, well, it seems like.
But how many, how many last places did Angie have?
How many last place? Well, I don't think anyone really said that. I wasn't telling.
Well, if they gave you two, then you know the last one.
Yeah.
It's kind of deduction thing.
I didn't deduce that. I can if we really want to. I know, yeah. Sorry, I'm not really good at doing this math on the spot here. My notes are like fairly, I believe it's two. Yeah, the top of my head, I think it's two. Yeah.
Pretty evenly split.
So it seems like at this point that Jen is probably the candidate who has the most support of the board and should go forward. Do you guys agree?
Seems that way, unless Renee has.
I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah. All right. Well, I think that's where we landed.
Why, you need a motion?
Yep, I know. I'm going to ask, is there a motion to enter into contract negotiations with Jennifer Warren Diamond? Is that what we should?
Yes.
Okay.
Is the motion to appoint pending successful?
No, go into negotiations.
Just to go, then we have to have another?
Typically, the motion is to appoint.
Pending.
Successful contract negotiation. You can do it either way, but that's typically the motion.
Is there a motion?
Okay. I move that we appoint Jennifer Warren Diamond as town manager pending successful negotiation.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Does the favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Does oppose, no?
No.
The motion passes four to one.
Great.
All right. We have one piece of business to attend to before we enter into the executive session, and that is vote to open the annual town meeting warrant on Wednesday, January 15th, and close the warrant on Monday, March 17th. So this is the usual vote to set the deadline and ceremonially open the warrant, which isn't actually required by statute. But we're also reviewing a request that Carter is making to set an internal deadline for warrant articles that are not citizens petitions, and that deadline would be set for January 31st. So just to highlight some of the key dates here, town meeting is Saturday, May 3rd. The warrant would be mailed Wednesday, April 16th, to the printer on Thursday, April 13th. The warrant would close on March 17th. For the finance committee, their public hearing would be March 13th, and the voting would be on March 20th. And for the select board, we're down as voting on March 11th, but we'll have a standing agenda item to discuss and potentially vote on articles as they come in, so that we're not doing it all in one day. So Carter, do you want to talk to that internal deadline request that you're making here?
Sure. First, all town boards, department heads have known since December 19th that budget submissions and warrant requests were due on the 20th of, January extended to 21st because of Martin Luther King Day. So this should not be coming as any great, and they've had two reminders since then, so this should not be coming as any great surprise. The reason we're suggesting that this, if you will, internal deadline be set is that the finance committee has expressed a bit of frustration over being able to get their report completed in time so it can be published in the warrant booklet that has to be set and mailed out. So after working with the chair of the finance committee and town council, we came up with this idea of an internal deadline. Departments that want to submit stuff afterwards, they don't have to go get citizen petitions, but it may not make it through the regular hoops of being able to get all the full select board review and recommendations, finance committee review and recommendations, just because of the deadline that the finance committee has to meet to have their public hearing and back everything up. So this has been reviewed with, with schools, finance committee, town council, and it was sort of the best mid-range that we could sort out. I will suggest that when you get around to your next charter review, you do look at some of these dates to line them up a little bit better, because they really don't work well internally. And I don't think this has come any great news to you, those of you who've dealt with the finance committee over the last few years. Happy to answer any questions, but, you know, I think we've fully fleshed out both Chris's and town council's view. And also, you can see that finance committee has built their budget timelines, and so all departments will have that tomorrow morning as well.
I'm fine as long as we keep to it. If we're going to make a rule internally that nobody says last minute, well, I, and then they come up with some doggy, my homework excuse. So as long as we're going to say, nope, it's not going to happen, I'm fine.
For the time I'm with you, sir, I will do my best to honor that sentiment.
Any other feedback? Or in support of it? Yeah?
I'm in support. I agree, same thing. I think we need to, if we make a rule, we need to follow it. But it sounds like this is what, you know, townwide would be the best decision moving forward, so I'm in support.
All right, cool. All right, with that, are there any questions on the general timeline or? All right. So is there a motion to open the warrant on Wednesday, January 15th, and close the warrant on Monday, March 17th with that internal deadline as described by the interim town manager?
So moved.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Does in favor say aye?
Aye.
Does oppose, no? The motion passes unanimously and the warrant is officially open. All right.
Mr. Chairman, may I? It's not on the agenda, it doesn't necessarily require an agenda item, but given your decision here tonight, given your next meeting is January 21, which is a pretty tight deadline, I'm wondering if this board would be open to scheduling a meeting for January 28th, should you need it. It's always easier to cancel it, but depending upon how contract negotiations go and everything, it might be nice to have that extra meeting on the, on the calendar, should you need it.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. If everyone's okay with it.
I'm, I'm fine as well, does it, I'm fine as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Carter.
I think, you know, what was mentioned, Mr. Chair, at the last meeting is that Select and Emke is going to be absent on the 4th, and Select and Alonso is going to be absent on the 10th. I always say it is very hard for this board to meet for eight weeks straight.
Yeah.
And that we may want to consider, if we're adding another meeting, if that actually occurs, that we may want to consider removing a meeting in February. I know it's already a short month. And we do have an appointment right now with the Minnesota Building Design Committee scheduled for the 4th.
On the 4th, yep, that's right. So that's an important one. I can consider that. I'll have to look and see the agenda. But Renee, let me just get this. Renee, you're not going to be here on the 4th, and then Tom, you're not going to be here on the 11th?
Yes.
Is that it?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right, with that, I move to enter into.
Well, before you do that, you may, you may want to have a closing public comment before we go into executive session.
Oh, we can do that.
I think there's somebody who wants to.
Is there? I don't see anyone. I don't know who you're pointing at, but.
Zoom.
Oh, on Zoom, my apologies. All right. Go ahead, Mr. Bowen.
It should be unmuted. Am I unmuted?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, very good. So I'm just concerned that you're going into a contract talk with, with your candidate for town manager, and there hasn't been a motion made that in the event that those contract talks stall or are unable to be agreed upon or fulfilled because, you know, the candidate's not satisfied with the direction of the contract, would, would it be good to be able to have the person who is second as the runner-up to be able to enter into negotiations with them? And I think that question would go to the consultant. I don't think that's necessarily a question for the board. Just my thought, and that's all I, I really had to say. And I think that overall, everything's been really good. I'm quite satisfied. Direction.
Thanks, Mr. Bowen. And I will actually ask Mr. Petron that question, if you want to answer it.
Sure. You've chosen a candidate, move forward, come to an agreement with that candidate. You can always come back. If you can't come to an agreement, you come back to another meeting and make another decision. To try to say to a second candidate at this point, oh, we're holding you on deck, that doesn't work in, you know, this type of world. So that decision could be made, you know, you know, after the fact.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other public comment in the room?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Rogers.
I initially.
Do you mind coming up to the podium?
Just ask, just ask for John's, just ask for John's mic.
Slide that one over.
Just ask for John's mic.
All right. Thank you.
I initially had some trepidations about the 17th of March being Irish and being St. Patrick's Day. And I would just caution everyone that the best intentions sometimes get muddied. And so let's be aware of that fact. The 17th stands in, and Erin, go bra.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rogers.
Ireland forever.
I'm, I'm not sure whoever wrote that deadline in the charter may not have been Irish.
All right. I move to enter into executive session, re-enter open session after exiting executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30, subsection 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares.
I'll second that, but I do question about why are we coming back to open session?
I had the same question.
For the purposes of the term.
To adjourn, yeah. We have to adjourn since it's an executive session.
Well, you can say, you can adjourn after. You could say not to come back to public session.
That's normally what we've done, but.
All right, whatever.
We've adjourned many times straight from executive.
Yeah.
All right.